Good evening, welcome. At this time, I call the Nash County Board of Commissioners October 28th Joint Meeting with the Nash County Public Schools Board of Education to order.
This time, I would like to call the Nash County Board of Education to order.
We begin our meetings with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. For the invocation, you're welcome to stand and join us, or you're welcome to have your own individual prayer, or we can use this time for a moment of silence. Commissioner Fred Belfield will give the invocation, after which I will give the pledge. Commissioner Belfield.
Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding. You remember, God said, "Love one another." Now, Father, we gather here in joint meeting, and we come and thank you first for the many blessings you have bestowed upon each organization, each member, and also our county. We pray, Father, that you will lead and guide us as we work to meet the challenges that we face. We know there are many, and we know you have a solution. We ask you, as Solomon did, ask for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of how to live with one another, and not only that, but have love and peace. Pray as this meeting goes on, that you be in our midst. You have told us where two or three are gathered. I am here with you. We thank you, and we know, we believe in you, we love you, we love one another, and we will have peace. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chairman Lamb, back to you.
This time, I will call Dr. Stephen Ellis to present the Nash County Public Schools. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, the county commissioners, school board members, guests. I want to welcome you to our joint meeting, the, I guess it will be the state of our school system. We appreciate your partnership and your continued support and your commitment to the students and families of Nash County. Tonight, we'll share an overview of our progress, highlight key achievements, and discuss the opportunities and challenges that lie ahead. Your collaboration and support are vital as we work together to ensure every student in our district has access to a high-quality education and the tools to succeed. Thank you again for being here and for your ongoing dedication to the future of our schools and community. At this time, I will review the agenda, and then we will present the presentations. If you have any questions during the presentation, the person up here at the time probably will be representing their department. If you want to ask them the questions, that'll be fine, or you can hold them to the end. So tonight, just did the welcome. We're going to talk about facilities, nutrition update, we're going to have a safety update, we're going to share some testing information, academics and accountability, and then we're going to have some areas of focus that we're going to discuss at the end. And first, we're going to have Ms. Angie Miller.
Good evening. I'm excited to share a little bit about our team with school nutrition and with our school maintenance department. So I'll start with a little bit about our school nutrition. So since 2024, right after or during the D-merger, we have to send our data in, and we were considered a CEP school. I won't read this verbatim, but we, after D-merger, we submitted that data a second time, and it's good for five years. So this will tell you a little bit, that means our students are eating breakfast and lunch at no cost, and that is every student in our school district. We qualified for that for all of our schools. The only thing that we see is right now is the unknown as it relates to SNAP and our federal funding, but at this time, for the next five years, we are locked in unless something drastic change with our federal funding. This gives you a little bit of the comparison of the two Septembers, September of 2024 and 2025, so it shows you how many breakfasts, how many lunches, our after-school snacks, and the supplemental sales, that is our adults and any of the side items that we serve at school. We cannot serve free for adults or any of the à la carte items. So that gives you just a little play-by-play. We're in a very good position at this time, and it has really, our increases of sales or increase of students eating breakfast and lunch has been tremendous over the last few years. I think last year, at the end of the year when we gave you, or the beginning of the school year, I gave you data as it related to the past years, and we are feeding many more families. I'm going to take a minute and talk a little bit about our facilities team. I get very excited when it comes to some of this, and Mr. Dennis Fields is with us tonight as well, and he's our director of our maintenance department. Many of you remember me talking with excitement about the Northern Nash Fieldhouse, and you came to our grand opening. Some of the stuff you did not see is on the right. We told you the floors were not finished because we wanted to finish those after we had all walked through and the community had walked through, so it was ready for the team. And so there's some of this in the bottom right, you'll see the floor and the emblem in the middle, that was done by our maintenance department, and it looks fantastic. You'll also see this is, that was actually the very first time we ever turned the lights on outside before we started our home games, and we got to take a look at how the lights were going to look and if everything was ready and up and running. Here, you'll see the facilities in the daytime and what the whole outside looks like, and many of you have been to the games, and you see a little bit of that, which is exciting. This is some updates that we have done at Tar River Middle, which is part of the other Tar High School, Tar River Academy. So we did this in-house, on the far left, the tables and the partitions separating where they have some centers for some of the students and the staff to meet. The Northern Nash Home Concession Stand was done in-house with our maintenance department. And then Williford, which is the building you're in now, the hallway down here, the doors and stuff were put in place right at D-merger, but they have new lighting and new mechanical HVAC. That was all done as a summer project. The next item that many of you have heard about, and we have new information coming regularly, and that is our new Southern Nash Middle School. We're in the final stages of the developing of the planning for that, and this is a little blueprint for the interior and the exterior of the building. Rocky Mount Middle, many of this, some of this was taking place during D-merger. It took us a long time to get the windows, which is the bottom left. You'll see that took some time for those to come in. We waited, I think it was almost a year for the windows, but the internal, the seating, the carpet, and the top right is, after we had everything pressure washed, cleaned up, and ready this past year, we actually had Tar River Academy graduation there, was the first event at the end of last year, and it was fantastic for them to be able to go in one of our facilities that was actually adjacent to their school. Rocky Mount High School Tennis Courts is a project that we just finished and completed last week. That was a capital outlay project that was much needed. It had not been touched since the school was built. They were at the point of, they were not going to be able to continue to play there, so we were able to get that in place. And these are new barrier walls, which is exactly like the one I just referenced here, but in the top left at Benvenue, it's a safety precaution that we've put in place, and that is about a $15,000 project for the secure barrier at Benvenue, and that's a capital outlay project. And we're looking at doing that to one or two schools a year as we see fit to help as they come through the Evolve, and that would cause a barrier for the adults before they get to the children. It's actually been very well received. Closing schools and maximizing spaces, this is just a little update. Swift Creek is back on the market now. It is again for sale. We have sold Cedar Grove. WL Green is vacant, but we have already started the process of cleaning that out, and our goal is to have that up by July 1st of next school year, excuse me, of summer. And Brazel has sold, and Rocky Mount High School Baseball Stadium. So we're just consolidating and maximizing spaces as we have done here at Williford. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me? Dr. Farah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leondra S. Farah Jr. I'm Associate Superintendent for Nash County Public Schools. Want to share some information with you for our school safety updates for the '25-'26 school year. Here's a list of physical measures that we have in place. Of course, we have cameras, we have access control for all of our exterior doors, we have SROs in all of our schools, we have safety drills that are completed throughout the school year, fire, lockdown, tornado, tabletop exercises, say something anonymous reporting, which is an anonymous reporting system where students, parents, and staff members can actually report any information that they might consider to be dangerous or of concerns to school staff and personnel. We have Evolve Weapon Detection Systems. We have school safety plans that are completed in the School Risk Management Plan website. We have a district safety team, which consists of individuals at central office, we have some of our SROs who serve on that committee with us, and then other individuals as necessary depending on what we are working on. We have emergency red panic buttons. These are actually physical buttons that are located in every school. In the event of an emergency, that button can be pulled, and there's a message that goes to a call center, which then calls the 911 call center to alert them that there's an issue or concern of safety at that school, where then law enforcement will be dispersed to that particular school. We have Rave Application. This is a digital platform that speaks directly to the 911 call center based on the particular school. We have LightSpeed. This is a technology filter, filter, excuse me, that searches for keywords related to violence. We have elementary school safe bolt locks on all of our classroom doors. We have school-based mental health services for all of our schools, SEL programming and therapeutic drumming, and we have risk assessment process when students threaten or act in any manner to harm themselves or make such a threat. So currently this year with school SRO offices, we have four middle schools, and we have one officer per middle school. We have seven elementary SROs. One SRO serves two schools. We have three SROs, Rocky Mount Police Department for our elementary schools, four at Nash County Sheriff Department. Rocky Mount PD has an SRO at Williford, but that individual also floats to other schools. So if that individual is here in the morning, in the afternoon, he goes to another elementary school in the city where there's not an SRO at that time, or if there's an SRO that's absent, he will go in their stead. Nash County Sheriff Department has an SRO at Spring Hope, but that individual also floats to other schools daily to provide coverage for absent SROs. And again, just like the SRO here at Williford, if he's at that school in the morning, then he goes to another school in the afternoon. There are seven high school SROs, Nash Central High School, Northern Nash, and Southern Nash High School. All of them have one SRO assigned to their school, but they have an additional off-duty officer who provides four hours of SRO services to that school each day. Rocky Mount High School has two SROs assigned daily, and Early College and City, they share So our Evolve Weapon Detection System, as you all, many of you are familiar, back in '23-'24, we installed those systems in our middle and high schools, and those systems would have to be replaced in the '27-'28 school year. Back in '23-'24, the costs to install those systems were about 1.7, and that was the installation for 13 systems. We leased those systems. We did not purchase them because at the time, Evolve was a new technology and had not really been created for schools, but were created for larger venues, but they were making their move into the school market. Now, since they've been active in school markets for about two years, they're cheaper, and their life expectancy goes greater than the four years of the lease that we did back in '23-'24. So when we're looking at our elementary schools, we installed them this school year for the '25-'26 school year. We purchased those, and again, we decided to purchase those because they have the life expectancy of a metal detector, and they're cheaper than what they were when we purchased them back in '23-'24. The costs of them were just shy of a million dollars, and that was for 12 of our elementary So when we're talking about school safety this year and what we really would like to see happen for us, our middle high, and middle schools and our high schools, we would love to have safe bolt locks on those classroom doors, just like we do for our elementary schools. The approximate cost of that is $825,000, and that's the approximate cost for purchase and for installation. The Center for Safer School Safety Grants for SROs, we were awarded that grant for the '24-'25 and the '25-'26 school year. And for each of those years, we were awarded $484,000 each year for seven elementary SROs and four middle school SROs. For SRO costs for the '24-'25 school year, the approximate cost was about $1,609,000 and $103.04. Of that cost, grant funding made up $484,000, and the other came from state funding, which was about $1,125,000. Estimated cost for an additional five elementary SROs, if we had an additional five elementary SROs that would allow each one of our schools to have one full-time SRO, that additional cost is about $449,523, excuse me, $449,523.50. And the approximate cost for full-time SROs at every school is around $2 million. Any questions for me?
Your MS has some safety boot door lockers. In case of a disaster or fire, can the students come through those doors without somebody going there unlocking them?
Yes, sir.
They are, they are automatic?
Yes, sir. So the way those doors are set up is, they're set up to keep individuals out, but at the same time, allow students and staff members to be able to easily leave the classroom. So in the event that there was an emergency situation in the school, instead of teachers having to try to find keys to lock the door, they could just walk up to the door and press a red button, which sets the lock factor into place. And when they're ready to go out, they just turn the handle and walk out of the classroom.
Do you think you have enough for the safety? I think also you need to look at the mental health of your students, because sometimes I've, I've read and seen in the news media where people, students that have mental problems end up wanting to kill others and themselves too.
Yes, sir.
I'm going, so I'm going to bring, take somebody with me. You do have that also in your program, right?
Yes, sir. So mental health is definitely a priority and a concern for Nash County Public Schools. It's not just a concern in Nash County Public Schools, it's a concern throughout this country. As I said before, we do have school-based mental health services in all of our schools. We also have social-emotional learning programs and curriculum in place for our elementary and middle schools. We have the therapeutic drumming. We also have a risk assessment process. So if a student makes a threat of violence towards themselves or someone else, there's a risk assessment process that's in place that those students go through that information and share with parents. In the event that we feel there's something that's escalated to a serious matter, law enforcement is involved, other mental health professionals are involved, because not only do we want to ensure that our schools are safe, but we want to ensure that the young person who we are working with get the help that they need.
And you, are you also working with parents?
Yes, sir.
Sometimes parents can catch these things before they, they act.
So before we can do anything in terms of mental health, parents have to be in agreement and sign off on that process, unless it's a situation where law enforcement becomes involved and then they take things into their hands. But we, we try to work with parents from varying levels, if there are things that we're seeing in school, by bringing parents in, having conversations with them, providing services and resources that are available to them, trying to get information from parents about students, because again, at the end of the day, for us, it's not just about keeping the school safe. That is our top priority, but it's also about making sure that the young person who we're working with, again, has the resources and tools that they need.
Dr. Farah, LightSpeed searches for keywords, you said. Is that only if they're using school technology? I mean, I can't see it doing it for their personal cell phones or anything.
Yes, ma'am. If they're using school technology, I want to say that if they're plugged into our internet, that it may pull it also, but I'm not 100% certain, and I don't see, no, just okay, no, no, but Mr. McQueen says no, so I was wrong in that, but it does with our, with the laptops that they're using from the school. So, so yes, we, we currently have a cellphone policy. Well, we've always had a cellphone policy in place, but with the legislation that came out for the start of the '25-'26 school year, it really gave us the ability to really put some teeth into our policy in terms of enforcing it. So we kind of have tiered it based on the grade levels. I believe with elementary and middle schools, once that bell rings for them to enter the building, they cannot have their cell phones out at all. And there are a few reasons written into legislation that a child could have it, but for the most part, children should not have their cell phones out during the instructional day. For our high schools, we talked with our high school principals, and they wanted to allow the students to have them first thing in the morning, and then once the bell rang to begin the school day, they could not have those out at anymore, at any other point throughout the instructional day until the bell rang to end school.
Does that policy also apply to the faculty and teachers as well, or is that just limited to students?
That is just limited to students, but one of the things that we've shared with our principals is that faculty and staff should remain professional. They should not have their cell phones out texting and talking on their cell phones during instructional day while they have students in front of them. If they're going to do that, that should be at a time when students are not present with them. And so we ask principals to make sure that they enforcing that, but the, the policy is for, for our students. I'm not sure if, take a question from the audience, but there's an audience member with a question.
On the cell phones, are they allowed to carry them in the classroom with them?
Yes, sir. So when, so when the, for, I'll give youth high school for an example. So when that bell rings at 7:30 to start the instructional day, cell phones have to be turned off, and they have to be out of sight. They're not supposed to be in the students' hands, and really, they shouldn't be in their pocket, they should be in their book bags. But the cell phone is...
That's where I'm leading to.
Yeah.
They ought to be in their locker.
Well, we, we have really moved past the time that students really don't use lockers. Most of the things are in their book bags, and so the, the general rule is that cell phones should be turned off and out of sight. And not just cell phones, but any other electronic device that's not used for instruction. So that means if they have the smartwatches, if they have AirPods or headphones, all of those things should be put away, should be turned off and put away. And, and I'll say this before I go to my seat, school safety is a constant moving ball. It's constantly evolving. Individuals who want to do harm and are committed to an act of harm, they're going to do it. None of the things that we have in place is 100% foolproof, but those things are in place to help mitigate as much as possible any harms that may come to our children, to our schools, our staff members, and we ask our, our staff, our students, our parents to be vigilant about school safety. If they see something, if they hear something, to make us aware, not to just pass it off as it cannot happen here, because the odds are in favor of something happening here more than, more than they are not. Thank you.
What incident happens the most that you're concerned about?
What incident happens the most that we're concerned about? That's a good question. I, I would say the threats of suicide. We have a lot of young people who make threats of suicide. We know that in a large percentage of the cases, those students are reaching out for help, but we have encountered young people who have plans that are written out, they are committed to the act, and there's a history of it. And so for us, the, probably our greatest concern right now is the, the threat of suicide. And we know that throughout this, this country, that there's been an increase in the suicide rates among young people. Any other questions? Thank you.
I'm Timothy Mudd, Executive Director of Accountability Research and Innovation for Nash County Public Schools, and just have a few slides about some of the academic achievements and updates from this past school year that our students and teachers achieved. So first, the big news that hopefully everyone's already seen, we've tried to put it out as much as possible, but our schools had a successful year in terms of school performance grades. 74% of our schools received an A, B, or a C, which is the highest percentage since school performance grades began being assigned 10 years ago. So in some aspects, in many aspects, this was the most... So, in some aspects, in many aspects, this was the most successful year that our students have had in over a decade of performance and academic performance. And so, that's something to really be proud of as a community and as a district, that we're really pushing achievement for our students and our schools and preparing them for the opportunities that lie after that. So, specifically, you can see each individual school here in kind of a year-over-year comparison in terms of growth status, their school performance grade, and their school performance letter grade. Some things just to kind of keep in mind when you're looking at this is, Ms. Miller mentioned it earlier, some of the things still transitioning from demerger. And specifically, we have a number of our schools that were impacted this year in terms of demerger due to the schools going to Edcom County and there being students in those schools that still lived in Nash County that had to have a new school, right? And so, there was some small student reassignment that impacted about half of our schools in terms of adding or subtracting some students over last year. So, when you compare 23, 24 to 24, 25, at a lot of our schools, the populations are a little bit different. And so, it's not necessarily specific year-over-year same students that you're looking at. Specifically, you look at Edwards Elementary School. It's a K5 elementary school this year. Last year was a middle school, right? So, it was grades 6 through 8. So, that's completely, that's basically a brand-new school with no data for us to kind of track where those students were specifically last year to kind of make some comparisons. The same thing for Winston Avenue Elementary School. It was a K2 school and has been transitioned into a K5 school. So, again, you're talking about almost a completely new school situation there for those students when you're looking at some comparisons. So, some things to keep in mind. One thing to really highlight was that we had a really successful year growth-wise, specifically at our secondary schools, as you can see there towards the bottom of that chart. Specifically, looking at proficiency percentages in specific subjects and across the board. 14 of the 15 subjects that are tested, we had increases over the previous year. And that includes in our science subjects where there was a new assessment this year. And so, typically, when there's a new assessment, the state even said it at the board meeting that they expect scores to go down when they've re-normed the assessment and done some differences. But we were able to still have some success in those subjects even with the new test. Proficiency in 10 of the 15 subjects is back higher than it was prior to the pandemic and COVID. So, I know a big concern that people still talk about is academic loss from the pandemic and overcoming those gaps that occurred during the pandemic. And in many areas in our district, our students and our teachers have closed a lot of those gaps. And in a lot of areas, we're performing higher than we were prior to the pandemic. And so, you can see some specific subject areas there that highlight some of the largest increases that were achieved last year for the elementary schools. This slide kind of represents the middle schools and high schools with the same information. The biggest highlight is that our overall proficiency, that's when you take all of the grade levels and all the subjects, 3 through 12, and you add up their, or average their proficiencies. We had a 4.5-point increase to 48%, which is again, the highest percentage of students proficient on end-of-grade or end-of-course tests or assessments since school performance grades were assigned. So, that's in over 10 years, our students are achieving at the highest level and as prepared as they've ever been leaving Nash County Public Schools. So, you can see here the high school indicators and our overall percentage there at the bottom. Not pictured on that graph is the graduation rate, which also increased by 2 and 1/2 points from the previous year and is the highest as it was since the pandemic as well. So, this is some subgroup information. So, again, the state also breaks out information by subgroups, so particular groups of students. And in 11 of 12 subgroups, again, we had increases of similar trend. And you can see some of the specific subgroups that highlighted there that had some of the largest increases, which mirrors, again, a lot of the same information from the different subject areas. Specifically, looking at some K2 information. So, DIBELS, M-Class is an assessment, literacy assessment for our K2 students. It's given at the middle of the year, excuse me, the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and again, at the end of the year, so that you can track progress over time. And so, very specifically, you can see highlighted there is the growth in all students, K through 3, the number of students who were at risk at the beginning of the year. That's the very top there, down to the same assessment at the end of the year. And so, essentially, reducing risk of academic failure and making sure students know how to read by over 705 students that were in that red group at the beginning of the year, that by the end of the year had transitioned out into a higher group and on grade level. This is also a comparison of that same information to the state. So, the state shares that information in their averages and benchmarks. And so, there are specific levels that you should reach, or students should reach at each grade level, kindergarten, first, second, and third. And you can see the percentage of students in Nash County Public Schools reaching that benchmark there across the top and the state average of students reaching that benchmark across the bottom. And in all grades, K1, 2, and 3, Nash County Public Schools, students are achieving higher than the state average on those benchmarks in early reading. This is a year-over-year look at the same information. So, comparing 2023 to 20, and 2024 to 2024 and 2025, with that same M-Class, DIBELS assessment, you can see over time, the increases in most grades and subjects from the previous year. And then, you can also see there with one of the bullets that our students in kindergarten, second grade, and third grade are achieving not only higher proficiency rates, but also higher growth rates than the rest of the state. So, some significant achievement there for our early learners. Moving on to career and technical education. So, these are our high school CTE courses. And many of those courses have credentials that students are allowed to earn or able to earn. And these are industry credentials. So, think when you go to a restaurant and you see like serve-safe certificates on the wall or you're at your auto mechanic shop and they have the ASE certified technicians. Those are the same assessments that our students can take after certain CTE courses. And you can see the increases in the percentage of students who achieved those certifications while in high school prior to graduation. So, those students can take those certificates, go straight into a job and say, "I'm already certified", and give them a leg up over other people. And so, there was a significant increase there in students achieving those certifications. This is also CTE-based in terms of our work-based learning opportunities. So, these are students who are still in high school, who have jobs in the community right now. They're working at businesses and industry in our community, either through internships, pre- apprenticeship programs, job shadowing, or they're in advanced studies and they're getting course credit in many cases to also be working and getting paid and getting that on-job experience. And so, we had over 250 students being able to do that while they're still in high school and get credit for it. So, just another way to make that connection between what's happening in the classroom to preparation outside of the classroom and for the next step. So, are there any questions on any of the academic accountability data from the previous year? Yes, sir.
Okay, when you have a cross-board improvement, I would say you have a model that every grade level probably using. Do you have a specific model that you, specific for elementary, middle school, high school, or is that... Tell me a little bit about your, the model, what your instructional model that all teachers of great levels are using.
Yes, sir. So, obviously, there's some...
You have a cross-the-board improvement.
Correct. There's a lot of consistency, K through 12, but then there's also going to be some differences based on that. But specifically, Dr. Ellis and the superintendent has really pushed high expectations for all of our students and our staff. So, that's one of the big starting points. Then, once you leave that, you get into our instructional framework, which all of our teachers use, which basically goes through what should happen in a classroom, right? What are the elements of good instruction that you should see, K through 12, in all of the classrooms, which goes into their lesson planning and their instructional delivery. And then, to monitor that, our staff, our principals, our central office staff are in the buildings, in the classrooms, providing feedback to teachers, providing feedback to principals on what they see on a daily basis to help continue to drive that improvement. And then, the final component of that is then taking what's happening in those assessments and looking at that data and information and identifying areas that still need improvement and then putting your focus in those areas to make sure that we're targeting those areas that aren't as successful as others, so that at the end of the year, we're, you know, really hitting all of the areas in terms of focus and improvement.
I hear some people in areas of welding, mechanics, and electronics have shortage. Are we directing any in those directions without putting any pressure on them?
Yes, I don't know specifically the conversations that happened at the school, but we have programs in electronics and welding at the school, partnerships with Nash Community College to provide some instruction in those areas. And many of these work-based learnings are students that are working at some of those businesses in those areas. And so, I know Mr. Thompson, our CTE director, is always talking to business and industry about what they need for their workforce and how can we, at the school system, partner to create programming and encourage students to kind of find those opportunities and prepare them while they're with us so that they're ready for those opportunities that are currently here and we have shortages in. But also, what are those things that are coming, right? Like, what are those opportunities in our area that aren't even here yet that businesses say they're on the way if we have qualified people for them? And so, I know they're looking at that programming and really trying to push students into those CTE courses to really prepare them for what happens outside of the classroom.
I was talking with a mechanic, auto mechanic. And I said, "Why it takes so long, you're holding the car a whole week to do repairs on his cell?" We're short. And we're pulling long hours. So, it seems to me that there's some opportunities out there. Everybody not going to get in the classroom and teach to go to college for a classroom, but they can go to college and be a technician, electrician. And someday, they may own a business.
Agree. And it's part of what we're trying to do is prepare students for all of those opportunities, whether it's college or going straight into the workforce. And I think, you know, our CTE department does a fantastic job of really providing as many opportunities as is required to prepare students and fulfill the needs of business and industry in the area to make sure that we're providing as many qualified candidates for them as we possibly can. Yes. Nash Central has a program, Southern Nash High has a program, Rocky Mountain High has a program. Not sure about Northern. That's it. I'll turn it over to Dr. Ellis.
At this time, I know this isn't our budget presentation, but what we thought we would do is still bring some areas of focus that we're going to start, probably just keep into forefront because there's some things that are happening in education that we still need to make sure we discuss with you all. So, first, we're going to talk about salaries, then it's about technology, and then the federal shortfalls of this year.
Good evening, everyone. So, first of all, I want to say that the information that I will share this afternoon will focus on how we use some of the funding that you do provide us. And I want to talk about supplements and retention. And we do have retention bonus that we are providing to all of our part-time and our full-time employees at this time. The only caveat is they must remain in the district for the entire 25, 26 school year. The other thing that your funding does for us at this point does allow us to provide teacher supplements. I've given you a breakdown of what those teacher supplements are. And I see a huge error. It's actually 11% if you have a bachelor's degree. It is 12% if you have a master's degree. It is 12.5% if you have your educational specialist degree. And it is 13% if you're a teacher and you have your doctorate degree. I will make sure that this slide is updated and it will be emailed to you by Dr. Ellis or his delegate. I apologize for that oversight. The retention bonus, again, it is offered to all part-time and full-time employees. They must remain in the district for the entire 25, 26 school year. The certified staff receive $600 at the end of the school year. And the classified staff, if they are full-time, they receive $250. If they are part-time, it is prorated based on the time that they provide to, or the service they provide to the district. And it does give us an estimate of roughly $400,000 that we pay in this expense every year. There are some concerns that we are beginning to feel a negative effect from the federal shortfalls. And these are the grants that we currently receive through federal. McKinney-Vito Grants, that focuses on our homeless population. The Migrant Grant, the English Learners Grant. Title I, which is a huge grant that we receive. Title II, it focuses on supporting professional learning and beginning teacher support. And Exceptional Children's Grant. Underneath that umbrella, there are many different facets of exceptional children, which also includes some of the mental health that was discussed earlier, mentioned earlier. And Impact Aid, it does help us with those that are living in low-subsidized housing. Many of our grants have seen a slight reduction and some of the grants have been canceled at this point. There are threats of more being canceled before the school year ends and some not even being renewed for the upcoming school year. Do you have any questions for me?
The grants that have been canceled, are they from the federal government or from private foundations?
Federal government. The federal government. Yes, sir.
I don't see no end in sight of that mess that's going on in Washington. Both sides dug in on their point and won't move. So, you got to find some way to continue those programs exactly where your grants, federal grants have played out because they can't get together and put together a budget.
Yeah, the $250 for the classified, that's part-time, prorated. And you said, you alluded to that that may, it may not even be $250 if they're not there, what, the full year?
If they're not full-time.
If they're not...
So, if you only provide four hours, which equates to four hours a day, roughly 16 hours a week, 20 hours a week, that would be, it would be prorated based on the hours that you actually provide the service to the district.
So, a retention bonus for those people could be $100, $200?
Yes, ma'am.
That low?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's no way to bring that up? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
It can be with additional funding. This is what our funding will allow us to pay at this time.
I'm not finished. I wasn't finished. I wasn't finished. Impact Aid, the low subsidized housing. What exactly do you all use that money for?
It's not a large amount. Since I've been a part of managing federal programs, the most we have received in a year is about $10,000. And it is used, it goes back to the local funding and used in various ways based on the way that finance deems necessary.
But I mean, is it used for extra teachers or what?
It's various things. And the finance officer is not here tonight. She's at a conference and I can't answer that specifically.
Okay. And one last thing, going back to the retention bonus. Why haven't you all asked for more than $400,000 for that? Or is that what you all allocated or what you asked the county for?
I'm going to lend that to Dr. Ellis because...
Every year, we come here and ask for more for retention bonuses. What we do is, what we're given is what we allocate for. The state a few years back did something with teacher supplements to prop up some of those. We call it tiered districts of 1, 2. I think it's 1 and 2, but this is all we can do about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Wallace, under your potential federal shortfalls, you have seven things there. Are these shortfalls due to the federal shutdown or are they unrelated to that? Are some of... Or some of both maybe?
It's a little of both. Each week we get an update from the state's federal department. And we're seeing that now because of the shutdown, some of the funding may not be released. We haven't gotten a definite answer on that as of yet, but they're letting us know for prior planning in the event that we don't receive the duration of the funding that we will allot it.
To get it where I was totally understand it, if we hadn't had a federal shutdown or if it's worked out and goes away next week, does all of this go away or are there some?
No, sir.
Okay. There's some.
Yes.
Anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to say this. This is a comment, not so much a question, is that all the school systems in the states that are supported by the state government, they're gonna, we're gonna have to depend on them more and also your county. Because that mess in Washington, they could care less about what is going on. They're doing their own thing. And you need to analyze it, keep up and work with the state and help our elected officials in the state understand that they need to spend more in education. And while I'm speaking, I was thinking, don't leave your bus drivers out. And I'm saying this seriously. And you need good mechanics to keep these buses safe. I saw on TV where the bus stopped and the driver didn't know, fire up under there. And a mother, they were putting her child off, saw it and helped them get all those 20-some students off of that bus and it blew up immediately. And so I think all of that work together, good mechanics, keep those buses in good shape, and good drivers out there driving them because these highways and streets are very dangerous and have people cutting in and out and inner herding wreck up there in Wake County around Raleigh areas a wreck every day. Now, I know I was, my wife was in the hospital up there during, I went up there every day and that was a wreck, people rushing. And they're rushing around here too. So they're rushing everywhere. So you need good, safe drivers and they ought to be paid well for a living. I was in a restaurant today and overhearing the comment where some people have been laid off around here. And they said they're afraid now with no money coming in that they're gonna, they can't make their mortgage and they're gonna lose their home.
Any other questions?
I just got one more. I'd like to direct it to Dr. Ellis, though, and not to put anyone on the spot, but I'm gonna say hypothetically, if the Board of Commissioners were to vote and approve a $500 bonus for classified workers, by statute, we can't tell you all what to do with that Would that put you on the spot to say if it was approved by the Board of Commissioners, would you, would the school board accept it and give it to the classified workers?
If the Board of County Commissioners decided.
I can't hear you.
If the county commissioners felt like that's where they wanted their money to go, of course, we would make sure that would be there.
Thank you.
Just a clarification to help me understand, on the retention bonus, that's a program that the school board does and puts together to help retain the teachers and the classified workers? That criteria is set up for that as far as how that's funded? Is that done internally with the Board or is that something that's come up in the Finance Department? How do we, how do we come up with the $600 and the $250? Just taking the total money and then dividing it out?
Absolutely. As far as available. And the number of employees that we have that are eligible is what.
Okay. So did the school system determine 600 for teachers and 250 for the classified?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm almost compelled to make a comment. And my comment is along the lines of we, as commissioners, must understand that it's the school board's responsibility to collect the funds that we allot the school system each year and decide where it's best spent. We don't have the insights as Board of Commissioners to know the ongoing ins and outs of the school board. We should give them the most amount of money that we can afford to give them and then leave it up to the elected school board officials to allot that money where they want it to go, whether it's bonuses, whether it's teacher supplements. And teacher supplements is something that we've made very clear that we are interested in continuing to help with and we've helped a lot over the years. But I don't think we should ever, as the Board of Commissioners, get into dictating where money is for funds go because we're not gonna know where the worst need is. That's the job of the school boards. And that's just a comment I'd like for our Board of Commissioners to remember that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up to Commissioner Davis, it has been done before, though, that this board, before I came on, had asked the school board to direct some funding to a certain program or to classified workers or teachers, whoever, and the school board did it. So it has been done before and I just wanted to clarify that.
Welcome. Any other questions for Ms. Wallace? Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you.
Tremaine McQueen, the Executive Director of Technology for Nash County Public Schools. And I'm here once again talking about our refresh plan. And the whole goal for this refresh plan is so that we have adequate devices for our students and our staff. And in, just to remind you what that plan looks like, our pre-K through first grade, their devices are refreshed every four years. And then if you look at our grades two, five, and ninth grade, those are three grade levels that we refresh our devices in annual. And our staff devices, we refresh about 450 devices and that's roughly about a fourth of our staff. And the cost to maintain such a device, a plan, is $1.8 million. We adopted this plan way back in 2020. You guys probably remember, y'all remember the COVID thingy. And we're actually approaching year six, this coming year, it's gonna be year six of this plan. And with the COVID funding that we received, we actually stretched out this money carefully to make sure that we maximize the impact and maximize the funding to support this plan. Now, every student in our district did benefit from the consistent devices across the board. Why, you might ask the question, why does this matter? So students use these devices as their textbook. They do things such as research, writing projects, collaboration, you know, and things of that sort. And so devices prepare our students for the real-world digital skills. Now, some of the challenges that we face, and I'll show you on the next slide, is securing a funding source. And that $1.8 million, you know, that's a lot. Yes. Oh, okay. I corrected up here. I'm sorry. I made the correction on, if you have 1.5 on your, I made the correction here, it's $1.8 million to maintain. Okay? Thank you for that. All right. Also, moving on to what I was talking about is the securing a funding source. So it's been quite a challenge to secure a funding source. So we've even went back to the drawing board to even change up our plans to see how can we still maximize the goal with cutting some of the fat away. If you look at Plan A, that's the ideal plan that we want. But Plan B, if you can see, what we've done, we only put the refresh at two grade levels and that's at third and eighth grade. So with that being said, these students keep these devices at five years versus four years with Plan A. Now, also, we've cut the devices for staff in Plan B. Now, the reason why this is significant, I went to a school today, this is, I told you, we are approaching year six. Some of our schools have not, we haven't refreshed their devices since we started this whole thing. And it's time for it. And the teachers are walking, I talked to a few teachers today and they were like, when are we getting our refresh? So that's really important. Let me move on. All right. So with that being said, one of the things that we need to do, we have to secure a reoccurring funding source for this device refresh. And we hope and we pray to partnership with our county commissioners to help us maintain such a progress. Long-term investment in student achievement and digital readiness is key. Are there any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't see 10th and through 12th grade, do theirs not get refreshed?
Okay. The way it works, the Plan A, you have, let's put that back up there. Oh, Lord. Okay. All right. So the way it works, second grade gets a device, they keep them for four years. Fifth, once they get to fifth grade, they keep those devices for four years. So when you receive those devices in those grade levels, those kids keep those devices for four years. That's why you don't see 11th grade because when they get it in ninth grade, they keep it all the way till they graduate. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I read a very lengthy article within the last week that talked about this very problem.
Yes.
About the refresh plans and apparently every school system is facing it.
Yes, sir.
Some to a much larger degree than what we are in here in Nashville, your numbers. And I particularly remember Wake County talking about it that week. And they seem to be headed in a direction of help solving it, that they would probably move away from total devices somewhat in the future, thinking they may have carried it too far and thinking it was hindering the student from doing critical thinking of their own. Is that a thought that may enter into y'all's process or should I be looked at? It just, I don't need an answer. I'm just saying that that was one way they were looking at it and it seemed to fit my thoughts of overutilization of them and them not being able to learn some things. And I'll just stop right there, but I certainly hope we'll continue to look at that as well as a way to solve this funding issue.
Absolutely.
And you apparently are aware of that.
I am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Have all the schools been refreshed? If not, which ones haven't?
Well, let's say this, we, when we had the COVID funding, we had a four-year run of refresh without a problem. I think the following two years, we did not receive any funding, right? So just this past year, we were able to use $1.8 million of our fund balance that we were able to pay for this plan. So again, we had so many devices that were out of warranty because we did not have the funding source for two years. So we were using, some of our students were using old devices. We were cannibalizing some of the devices that we, that were out of warranty. If they die, we just take the parts out, blah, blah, blah. But yeah, that's how we were able to survive. Yes, ma'am.
But is there a whole school in Nash County, one or two or three, that have not been refreshed?
So when we refresh, we refresh by grade level across the board.
Okay.
So second, all schools. Fifth, all schools. Ninth grade, all schools. So it's not a school that has, so are you saying that, do we have devices that, are we needing of refresh right now? Yes, ma'am. Next year. Absolutely. So to remind you, I just said that there were two years that we went without a device, right? We just got refreshed last, this past school year. So with that being said, there are, we still don't have, all devices are not, don't have warranty on them, if that makes sense.
Okay. I guess.
Okay.
And this is sensitive, I guess I'm trying to find out if some of the lower-performing schools are being targeted last to be refreshed. But you're saying that's not the case because it goes by grade?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Grade level across the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So in closing, I'm just gonna say thank you. You can tell there are a lot of good things happening in Nash County schools. And we just want to appreciate your support and dedication to these students and we'll make sure we bring the county budget back to your school budget in March and we'll have some of those discussions. So thank you. Are there any questions for me, Ms. Wilfons? I thought you called me out, I was gonna call you out, so.
Yeah, you answered what I needed.
Did I eat it right down?
And it was the right answer and I appreciate it.
Do we have any board members that have a question? Commissioner Davis?
Dr. Ellis, you know, if we all look at these test scores, it's a great achievement for what has been done in a pretty short period of time. And can you elaborate on how you and your people accomplished that? I know it came in a timing that would make you think it had something to do with the merger, which I honestly don't think it did. I think y'all are doing something different and maybe we don't need it as long as they are. But what do you think has caused this tremendous improvement in test scores?
So I'll correct you, you're right. We came out of low performing with our Edcom schools. Two years, we were out of low performing with our Edcom schools.
That's right.
Which is a, which is a good thing. I always get, I get a little personal when someone says those schools. We did it with the whole group, with the 28, I believe, was back then.
If I made you think.
No, no, no. I just want to make sure everyone knows, we've done this, we've been out of low performing probably three or four years now. There you go. Thank you.
But it continued to get better.
Right. And what I will say first, I think we took an effort in Nash County to really focus on the classroom. You're not gonna see, and I don't like to use the word fluff, but when you go to a classroom, you're gonna see, we put our money in the classroom. When Tremaine gets up here and talks about technology, textbooks, we have it all now, but we always focus on that classroom. We have instructional coaches now that are assigned to the schools. Principals are having the accountability piece that we feel like we have at the central office. And I think that we all know that this high expectation means a lot of things. We have promotion standards now. I don't think we've had those before, but we've had promotion standards. So what does it mean for a kid to be a sixth grader? Whether they got to pass their courses, they got to be in school attendance. And there's a lot of things, BOG passing test. So I think what we've done is we just narrowed the focus. And now the good thing is, I think it was my first year here, we had, I think, out of the 28 schools, 20 schools were low performing. So I don't know how you address needs of schools with so many, you're just a low-performing tag. So what I will say, and Ms. Wilfons, this will be your point, now we have a chance to really put a whole bunch of supports at schools that are low performing. And I know what Dr. Mudd didn't go into, you know, we've got two schools right now that are one and two points away from being a C. So that's a good thing. And Edwards right there, I think those were fed from DS Johnson, Baskerville, am I right, DS Johnson? Those schools' performance grades were probably at a 12 and a 13. Last year, that school performed a 39. So you can tell, you know, we're focusing on first these students and then we expect them to perform, you know? And then we expect teachers to perform and principals to perform. So it is not a magic pill, I'd have bought that years ago, but I do think we have put a lot of focus, and you know my team, you've met my team, we all have the same focus on high expectations for these. we all have the same focus on high expectations for these kids. And we're seeing it work. Our principals are buying into it, our teachers and our parents understand now that when your kid's in school, they need to learn. And here's what promotion looks like. So that's all I can say.
Other questions?
Comment. I was talking with some people last week about technology. And they're saying that don't get set on one way of doing it because technology's gonna change every year, every day. And if you can't measure up and use it, then you're out.
Thank you, Commissioner Bellfield.
Technology should be very important in the school system in educating our students.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilkins, do you have some questions?
If there was some question.
Does any, does any member of staff, county manager, do you have any questions, comments?
It was Ms. Bray from.
I don't personally think we normally take public comments at our mid-month meetings, but if this is a school board meeting, if they wish to take those comments.
I'd be glad to talk to her after the meeting, if she has any questions.
What about Ellis?
I said I'd be glad to talk to her after the meeting if she has any questions.
We got, we got a meeting November third, they can always speak.
County manager, have a comment?
I apologize, but Dr. Ellis, the next time that we're together and it's for our budget meeting, it would be helpful if when we're talking about the grants that are being reduced and it, can, can we, can you share some numbers with us? Can we?
So normally when we have our presentation, those grants have not been filled yet. So when we had our conversation, I think Dr. Ferr got up here and starts talking about the safety grants, they aren't done then. That's when we talked about, I think I had a discussion with a few of the members and said, we don't have those numbers. We're not guaranteed any of those numbers. I will never put those up there because I'm not guaranteed. We already got cut last year. There's some Safe Bolt Lock money we thought we would get, we're not getting it this year. That's why it's up there. So it's hard for us to ever put, and I call it money I don't have. I'm only gonna show you the money we know.
Right, so I'm not saying for what you're projecting to have for the upcoming budget year, but can you show us what happened this year? Can you give us the actuals of what happened to you this year so that we can understand the deficit that you're currently living with to be able to look forward and, and try to plan for that?
We could.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, we're, we're being told that you're seeing right now reductions.
Correct.
Can you share those reductions with us?
When they give us that information, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
Any final comments? All right, Dr. Ellis, I want to thank you and your staff for a very informative presentation. And I want to thank you for what you and your staff do and the teachers to educate our students. We appreciate you. We value the relationship we have with the public school system. Thank you, sir. Turn it back over to Chairman Lamb.
I will thank the Board of Commissioners for listening to what we need and what our students need. You're very helpful in making us work harder to see that goal. And like I said, it takes all the spokes in the wheel to make the wheel round. It's very evident that you can see by this facility how good our maintenance department is. We have child nutrition, bus drivers that are consistent every day, even though we're shorthanded. But we thank you for what you have given us as to help our students and teachers. With that, any other board member have any questions or comments? Okay, at this time, I'd like to adjourn the Nash County Board of Education Joint Meeting. I'll turn it over to Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. There being no further business, that concludes the business for the Nash County Board of Commissioners for this meeting. So at this time, I'd call for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Wilkins, or seconded by Commissioner Howell. All in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, we're now adjourned.